Public hearing. For March 13, 2018, roll call please.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Here.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Here.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beer.
Here.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Here.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Here.
Public hearing number one, an ordinance to regulate door-to-door solicitation. Mr. Andre Cludren.
Mr. President, members of the council. There were some federal court cases a couple of years ago that addressed the issue of door-to-door solicitation or peddling, and actually, the U.S. Supreme Court struck down some ordinances of cities that prohibited door-to-door solicitation, or too tightly, or maybe loosely regulated that. So as a result of that, the Louisiana Municipal Association advised city attorneys, hey, you might want to go back and look at your ordinance on door-to-door solicitation to be sure it's compliant with those recent federal cases. So we did. So as part of this process, I consulted with the police chief, with the city prosecutor, with the city revenue officer, and the city administration, and came up with this proposed ordinance. Now, what the law says is that you cannot prohibit door-to-door solicitation. It's actually free speech, protected free speech, but you can't regulate it. Your regulations have to be reasonable, and they do allow time limitations, they do allow some reasonable limitations on that. As it turns out, you'll see the ordinance I proposed looks like there's a lot of changes. Actually, it's not a lot of changes from what the city actually does. The ordinance itself didn't provide for that, but the way the city operated did. So all we did was move that into the ordinance, which I think gives us a better chance to enforce that, since it's an ordinance and not just an administrative rule. There are two points I want to bring your attention to, changes that are being made. The first is, we're specifically saying that you only can solicit door-to-door during daylight hours. That was not expressly either in our ordinance or in our operation. So we're saying you can only do that during daylight hours, that's a cause for safety concerns. And secondly, we want to make clear that if a property owner has a "do not solicit" sign on their property, which is their right, you cannot solicit or peddle at that location, and that would be a violation of the ordinance. So those are two things we tightened up. Otherwise, it is what we have been doing, it just formalizes it. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have about it.
What about the permitting part? And does this impact people or candidates who might be going door-to-door for campaigning? How's that left out?
It depends on what they're doing in their free speech. This is door-to-door. Definition is a product or a service is what is being solicited for. And permitting is allowed. Courts have upheld permitting as a reasonable regulation.
I know we struck down the permitting requirement. Are we proposing to reinstate that?
Well, we've had a permitting requirement for door-to-door solicitations already in our existing operations.
Not for political campaigns?
No, 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 sir. Political campaigns is not a solicitation for goods or services or donations. No, sir. It would not apply. No, sir, not apply to candidates for office.
Let me answer my question. That's the important question.
Yes.
Can we ask a question? It's not that big of a question. Louise Bostick, 112 Elm Drive in Hammond. So churches like Latter Day Saints and Jehovah's Witnesses, are those included as solicitation or excluded?
Let me read for you. Let me read for you.
I have another question.
And Girl Scouts is also...
Andre, I think that definition is right before this, where the ordinance changes again.
Yes, right.
And it's not, it's not being changed, so that's where the...
Yeah, we're not changing. We're not, this is not an effort to change what currently is being done. So if the Girl Scout cookies are having to register, they have to register. If they didn't have to register before, they don't have to register. The only changes are daylight hours, and if you put no soliciting, it's a violation of the ordinance to solicit.
My other question was, how is daylight defined? Is it body of?
Yeah, it is...
Daylight savings?
Yeah, it's eight to five during standard time, and it's eight to seven during daylight savings.
Okay, thank you. Those were important.
So whatever's being done now is not, this is not going to change up what's being done now.
Because Andre, I've never really read it before, so I was just reading it with the positit highlight, like for instance, it says criminal background information on each solicitor. So I'm just going to give it a what if. So if high schoolers are, so I guess you're saying that if high schoolers now are not required to have a permit, then they wouldn't be required under this change anyway?
Correct.
So it doesn't really matter in that regard. So the only people requiring permits, I'm assuming would be people selling...
Engaging in the business of going house-to-house, door-to-door, offering to sell for future delivery, goods, wares, merchandise, or services in the future, or the making, manufacture, or repairing of articles whatsoever.
How does that differ, just not to get along with it, but how does that differ from, you know, a high school team is selling, you know, something, shirts or whatever else, and they come by your house and they say, hey, I want you to buy a shirt, we're going to deliver it to you down the road a month from now. How does that, does that differ? Do you see that as different?
It would technically, I think, require it, but now I'm not sure what's being done right now.
I don't think there's anything being done right now, and so that's because, you know, and that happens all the time. I can come, someone knocks on my door and say, we're selling, you know, cookies, and they'll be delivered next month once we get the orders in, and they solicit, but they don't have a background check at all.
Well, the background check is not, as I remember...
Background information that we solicit.
Information, not a check, but they're required to disclose that information, and as I talk with Jenny, if that looks suspicious, we'll get a background check. If it doesn't, if it doesn't look right.
We have nonprofits listed as an example earlier.
Let me find out that. Whatever, yeah, whatever the...
Section 2323.
Later on, I just, that's a couple of questions I have. Maybe we could...
Section 2323.
Yeah, this is, that's not part of what's being changed.
Right. Improve nonprofits...
Nonprofit where the sale of good is donated by the owners, the proceeds are applied to charitable or philanthropic purpose would be exceptions. So this is, this is the, this is the commercial, commercial enterprise that's being regulated. And thank you for that, Dr. Landr. I'm trying to...
Any more questions? Number two.
An ordinance, ordinance to declare a surplus and authorize the sale of items listed below to sell on GovDeals.com. Janet Thurman.
Good evening. As I presented the last council meeting, these are four units that are no longer of use to the departments. They all have mechanical issues, so we're asking council's approval to declare them as surplus and authorize us to sell them on GovDeals.
Number three, an ordinance to amend a tow-in ordinance regarding rotating record log. Chief Stewart.
Good evening, everybody. There's no changes to the ordinance from the, from the last meeting. Any questions?
Mr. President. Chief, I mentioned to you, ran it to you, and I wanted to, I wanted to look at the appeals process part of it.
Yes, so, yes.
Andre, I mailed you, yes, sir.
Yes, sir. And so what, the current ordinance does have an appeal process to the council.
Okay.
That was not recommended by the group, but you could certainly reinstate that, and my suggestion is, I put some language that the record service suspended or removed from the log can appeal it, the decision of the police chief to the council. And it's got to be in writing 15 days and submitted to the clerk. So yes, sir, that, you could certainly add that section to it.
Okay. And one more quick question, chief. Is there any particular reason that, I looked at the old ordinance versus the new ordinance, and all I really see is a time change. Is there any particular reason why?
Pretty much, just to bring it back in line with the, with the current policy, and we're in line with the, with the state of Louisiana, Louisiana State Police to the extent of time, equipment on the trucks, cleanup, cleanup responsibilities. All the, all the tow truck drivers know what they have to do from the state side of it. The city ordinance was a little, wasn't, wasn't as clear. I just, I just cleaned it up a little bit. Mostly it's because of the time and cleanup, because we just want to make sure that, that when a rec is cleared, that they do remove the debris out of the street other than biohazard.
As I mentioned to you in the last meeting, my, what I'm looking out for is local guys. Do you anticipate that this would hurt the local folks?
Those, the local guys, yeah, they're doing, no, they're not going to, nobody's being impacted because we're not taking anybody off the list, and we're probably not going to add anybody to the list unless somebody drops out for whatever reason.
Okay.
But we try to make, but the, I guess, one of the, one of the components of the meeting was the, was the removal of the suspension. We're trying to make it more business-friendly.
Yes, sir.
Where, where I would, I would engage the owner and let them know, hey, you know, we've got to complain about A and B, and whatever it is, and let the owner work it out with the tow truck driver so that we don't take any kind of action against the tow truck, or we have to suspend him from a rotation.
Got it.
Because that's the, that's the money, that's their money hook.
Okay.
And we don't want to do that.
Yes, sir.
And you don't have any problems with the appeal process?
No, I was fine with it. It doesn't, either way, it doesn't matter to me. But, but because I was the first arbiter with the discipline, if I had, if I took a guy off the, off the rotating list, if it came to me and I had to take them off, then the, then the appeal was going to come to me as well. I didn't think that was fair.
So if it's a 15-day timeline, does that fit in, does it have to, has to fit into a council meeting? So is that going to be something that we need to clarify?
Well, so what we're proposing is, they've got to appeal it within 15 days after receiving notice, then the council would take it up in its normal course of business, and they deliver that to the clerk.
Okay. Because I can hold, I can hold up the suspension until the appeal is heard. I mean, it's not a big deal. I can hold it in the, hold the suspension in abeyance.
That's fine. I'm, I answered all my questions. Thank you, chief.
No problem, Jason.
What's your biggest problem with it? Is it the cleanup after?
Nothing. Really, it was just cleaning up the ordinance again, mostly for time. The ordinance had a 20-minute on a clock, we put them on a 30-minute clock. Traffic in Hammond is, is getting a little worse, and so we want to be able to get these tow truck drivers, we want to be responsive, but we don't want to, we can't have the police officer waiting 45, 50 minutes for a tow truck either. It's only because we've got to put them back on the street. So we got to, but everybody, so everybody knows, we've had, we haven't had any complaints, and all the tow truck drivers make their, make their hits within the 30-minute mark without a problem. There's been no, there's been no, there's nothing, there's nothing working in the background that indicates that a tow truck company or several are in jeopardy. Nobody's in jeopardy of anything. We're just cleaning it up, just trying to bring it in line with, with, from the state. Again, it was mostly because of the state police were there, they showed us what they did, we married up with them, and then we got with the tow truck drivers, and we all came into agreement on that.
More questions, or not?
Thank you, guys.
Now we're moving to our regular meeting. Roll call please.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Here.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Here.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beer.
Here.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Here.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Ms. Janice, if you might leave a complaint?
O Heavenly Father, we come to you mostly thanking you, O Heavenly Father, for all that you're doing in our lives. We pray, O Heavenly Father, that we do the business of the city of Hammond as those who have elected us would have us to do. We pray, O Heavenly Father, that we do all that is in our power to improve the lives of our citizens financially, educationally, and also, O Heavenly Father, we pray that we do all that is in our power to improve this city. These are our blessings. We ask in the name of your precious Son Jesus. To God be the glory. Amen.
Amen. A resolution to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States. One nation, one God, and everyone, the liberty of justice for all. You can count the report?
Now, this morning, we had a ribbon cutting for the Bryant family on Caroline Street, Caroline Street, the Fuller Center. David and Tamara Denell doing great work like they've done for many years in the city of Hammond. This is about the 32nd home that they'll be building for a family that otherwise couldn't afford this home. They've been on the list for, I think, two years, and now they've been accepted. So many volunteers showed up today. Home Depot, Fuller Center had people coming from as far as Virginia to help out. The youth build program from Quad area was there, they must have about 13, 14 children, or actually, younger adults that are helping with this program as well. So they're excited about getting a new home, hopefully within a year, weather permitting. The lot was still wet. One of my buddies, Glenn Alax, a local contractor, pulled the permit, he'll be overseeing the project, but that's exciting for the Bryant family. Also, you see the, the flag here, Safe Communities, which we have been reaccredited again every five years, you have to get reaccredited. Mason Foster started this in 2009, and this is a program that partners with many organizations, Crime Stoppers, Jody Roner, who's done a huge job of putting the application together. It's about a, as you said, it's about 140-page application. But you get information from all entities and all other organizations around the area to help folks, you key on certain areas that you want to focus on in the communities. Hours of substance abuse, unintentional poisonings, unintentional falls, fire department, and other police department can do as well, can go into older folks' homes and show them where they might want to position furniture so they don't bump into it falling trip. Also, you have a council on aging, North Oaks Medical Partners as well, school system, sheriff's office in southeastern Louisiana. Once again, we went down to RPC, Regional Planning Commission, President Miller and I, and there was an individual from Virginia that came down and was once again saying, local municipalities are going to have to put money aside for matching funds for transportation as far as roads and such as that, so just something to keep in mind. That's my report, sir.
Thank you. Are they in the new business, and are they likely to be recognized? For now, approve of minutes, please.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beer.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Motion approved. Number one. I'm sorry.
New business, number one.
Number one, a resolution to support and encourage the placement of signs in strategic areas of the city that discourage contributing to panhandlers. Councilman Jason Hood.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Council, fellas, the council members, I've, I've mentioned this a couple of times to you guys before. Sent out a couple of emails to get some input on placing some signs where panhandlers tend to frequent. I mentioned in the email to Andre, to, thank you for helping me with the resolution, Andre, that I would like to see them placed at every entrance and exit that leads into the city from the, from the interstate. So, and then there are a few, like the Walmart entrances and the Hobby Lobby exit, they seem to set up there. It will, it will not, it may not change a thing, but at least people will have to go set up shop to beg panhandler for money. Unfortunately, some are, have unfortunate circumstances that really need it, and then there are some that cheat the system. And I would like to see these placed to just discourage it, and maybe these folks that are cheating the system would go find somewhere else to go set up and panhandle. So anyway, I've given you a copy of an example sign that I've researched, and I thought would, would be appropriate, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second. Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beer.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Motion approved. Number two, a resolution to transfer 80,000 from available surplus funds, project 42015800-560330 to project bridge protection, Club de Luxe Road at Arnold's Creek. Chuck Springer.
Background on this particular project is about two years ago, 18 months or two years ago, we noted some problems with the bridge over Arnold's Creek, Club de Luxe. It's near Second Rose Hill Church and near the fun farm, if you know where that is on Club de Luxe. It is a city bridge, it is a city road. At that time, the parish intended to have the work, remedial work done by contractor on Club de Luxe Road. Of course, that's been dragged on a little while, but now that's about to commence. And about a month ago, I received a letter from Mr. Maurice Jordan, the parish engineer, saying that they would not be able, they being the parish, using Beverly Construction as their contractor, under that contract, do anything to the bridge because it was outside the scope of what their grant funds allowed. I took the mayor, the mayor and I web rode out to the project and looked it over, and we kind of pooled all the people with available interest in that infrastructure to meet, did meet, and there was an agreement that the city of Hammond and Tanspo Parish Council would share in the cost of armoring that abutment, and as you can see, it's very bad. I asked that the mayor declare an emergency. This is a little better picture of it. Because I don't think we can wait 60 days to take bids and to wait that process through that it normally takes to do an emergency. And there's another picture of the abutment. This is the actual northeast abutment, and you see it washed out completely, it's eroded underneath it. It's in bad shape. It's not a danger yet, but it's going to be if we don't move, because that Arnold's Creek continuously scours and erodes it out. We approached Beverly Construction along with another contractor, got some quotes immediately from them, since they're already going to be on the job in April, 1st of April, and asked them if they can move in by, prior to that point. They said they could. I think the parish council last night approved their cooperative endeavor.
Correct.
And the city, I think it's next item on the agenda to do the same. So we took one emergency quote, we did meet with them, we did try to get more, get them prices right. I think their prices are fair, and we recommend that we, are we awarding it, or we just transferring it?
You're transferring it right now.
This is just transferring.
So this is, this is half of the cost of doing this protective, prospective work. It is a unit-priced project. When we get in it, it may be more, may be less, as with any unit price. We're bidding cubic yards of excavation, tons of limestone, cubic yards of flowable fill, and you know, when, when we get, actually get it all cleaned up, it may be worse, it may be better. Hopefully, it's not any worse, but it is not getting any better as we speak. So we're trying to immediately move on this and not go through the normal public works. It is an imminent threat to the welfare and safety of the public. If that bridge falls in, we have $750,000 worth of trouble, because we'll have a bridge out, and a major problem for our traffic, as you can understand. So that's the nature of the transfer of these funds from our, there is a generally sweeping fund that's used in the capital projects now that has some funds there that I think has been identified, the administration to assign to this project, which is, represents half the projected budget. So we'd recommend approval of this transfer.
Mr. President, Chuck, I'm not sure if you would, I'm sure you would have maybe a question for the administration. Is there a process? Do we inspect our bridges every so often, or?
The parish inspects all bridges over two spans every two years. This was apparently not a problem two years ago. I was, it called my attention about 18 months ago by the pastor of that church. So I then called the parish, knowing they were going to redo the road, and they said then, well, we're just fix it when we do the road, and that took them a while to come to a pro, a answer that, no, we're not going to now be able to fix it, but they have agreed to put up half the funds to fix it. And we did solicit the drainage board for assistance, and they, their call does not allow them to work on bridge protection. Their bond call is specifically for canals, they can't touch a culvert, they can't touch a bridge. So when we back away from the bridge, the erosion that's happening at Second Rose Hill, upstream of that, the drainage board will do 100%, but they can't work on that actual bridge abutment. They can't, their funds won't allow it, or at least their, their millage that they have a call for does not allow work on bridges, or even in vicinity bridges.
I have a couple of questions, Mr. President. So on the, what you guys have listed here, this 133450?
Yes, sir.
That's the total cost of the project?
Yes, plus, plus some inspection. We're not going to charge engineering fees, but I'm going to put an inspector out there full-time to make sure we can keep track of all quantities.
So is the parish paying the balance of that, is what we're saying?
They're paying, well, we're putting up 80 apiece for 160, it may be 75 or 70 when this is all said and done, but we're putting up a 160 just in case we need more work.
And my second question is, the surplus, it says the surplus fund, I think that's what it said, a resolution, resolution to transfer 80,000 bucks from the available surplus funds. What's the total amount of surplus funds we have available?
I don't know.
Okay. So now after this, if this 80 goes, then we're, we still have some funds available?
What the, when we started doing that, we started doing that towards the end of last year, after consulting again with the auditors. They had mentioned that we were keeping funds in closed projects once they finished too long, and they were just sitting there. So they were almost like, here's a little bit of money here, here's a little bit of money here, here's a little bit of money there. So once we close projects, they stay in the capital fund. So they don't go to general operating or any other fund. They stay there, and then they're only allocated, such as we're doing tonight, through council approval.
Or reassigned through some type of resolution, whatever.
Through, through council approval.
So this is excessive, this is surplus funds in capital projects?
Correct, correct.
Not in any other fund?
Correct, and they are only approved through council approval. They're not, it's not something that we...
So you can't just go write a check for about 200,000 tomorrow, since it's in there?
Correct.
Okay, that's good to know.
It's just easy for you to see as council members who aren't dealing with the day-to-day, now that we set it to a side, out of line, out of spot, now during the course of a year, you just have to say that, you know, what's in, what are the overage as the year is going by? So if you want to do something extra, whether it's a timber lane project, drainage, or something to that, the capital funds could go there.
But so, so do we know, like, as projects sunset, when those, when those excess dollars become available, do we get a, do, we don't necessarily know, okay, it's going to come by?
Well, I give you a report, the conclusion of every capital project, so if you look at all the budgets I give you at the bottom, there's a line at surplus, or, and that, that fund, you know, once that project's closed, that, that's the amount.
And we'll just have to, just add it to whatever the...
That just, that, that contract gets closed, and that surplus fund gets transferred into this.
That's good to know. Okay, thanks. Thanks, Mr. President.
So if, if we have this fund, wouldn't it be on the, on the, if we, we have funds on a consolidated budget for everything from the general fund to the insurance fund, would that not be on the consolidated budget somewhere?
It is, it's in, if you want to answer that, Seda.
It won't be on that because it's a multi-year fund.
It's in your what?
It's a multi-year fund.
Okay.
We don't close that fund each year, so we wait till the...
It's three-year, it's a three-year.
Is it three years before a project dies? If it's not done, then it goes back into...
Correct. It's the 420 is the best way that we follow it, yes.
And we have a couple more this year that are probably going to need some more of that money. We have a problem with the J. David Davis Bridge, pedestrian bridge, you know, you've seen it, and I know the mayor, and I've seen it. We're going to bid that out, since that's not a true emergency. That's not in your project anyway, but it's washing out similar under that pedestrian bridge. We're going to armor that, well, we're going to use sheet piling. And we did not use sheet piling on this bridge because of the three-phase electric overhead that couldn't drive the sheets under the electric power. We also are going to do some drainage work, and we're also going to do the Whitmar Drainage Project. As you know, when we reported to you last meeting, we have about 275,000 in sewer rehab, and we only have 230. So when that bid comes in, we'll harden up that number and try, probably have to transfer.
From the surplus.
But then always, they don't come always in under budget. Sometimes they come in over budget. So throughout the fiscal year, in the next couple of months, we'll know the bottom line on that. We're also going to...
Can I finish?
No, that's it. Excuse me.
So whenever, for the new, so I realize, there's not a way to put it in the budget so that the new council coming in would be able to identify these funds and, and, and look, look for that as they budget, as they go through their budgeting process? That would be important to me.
I mean, if you like, you know, we can provide that for any of these.
I mean, we have, we have a line for all the other funds, from what I'm understanding.
And these are yearly fund, we budget for each year, and that one is not, so there's studies that we don't put it on.
Okay.
But we do have capital improvement budget on the, in the, in the.
So if they don't ask, there's no way of knowing exactly what's in there? They can't go to the book like, like I can to find out?
Well, Councilman Hood, that's what.
I mean, we can create something for you if you like.
Well, we kinda asked about this in a different way. When we were asking, can we have a list of all the capital projects as they move through the process? You know, where, where are they in the status, and how much have we spent, what's left over?
Right.
But we've never been able to get a report that, that really just, that shows that. Cause that would, that would ultimately tell you right then, if you have, if you have a list of all capital projects for the last four or five years, you would know which projects had surplus funds when the project was done. But we've never been able to get a list that really reflects that whole process.
And, and one more, one more question, and Andre, this might be, don't we have to do this by ordinance, not resolution? I thought to transfer funds, you had to do it by ordinance.
If, if this changes the budget, amends the budget, that's gotta be done by ordinance.
Yeah, the previous rulings we had from the auditors, if it moves out of the 420 fund, it has to be by ordinance. But if it stays within that fund, it does not have to be by ordinance, it just has to be by resolution. We do budget change forms all the time, moving money within the 420 fund or within the 616 fund. Matter of fact, you got one coming up in a minute on your, on your agenda. It's only resolutions required unless it, unless you take sales tax dollars for capital improvements and move them into operations. That's a different appropriation, that's an ordinance.
Okay.
You should have a budget change form in front of you, it says that on that form. The auditor approves that form, so we can just track internally what, what's happening to these dollars within that fund.
Okay.
So maybe a budget change form would have been the right thing to do in this case, but this is a little special animal because it's an emergency, we're trying to hurry up and get it done, and we're just moving forward with it. So typically, that might have been a budget change form, and we'd have created a new project number and gone out for bids, and, and that's, that's not quite the way this one's unfolding.
Okay.
We do one of these every five years. We don't typically do one that's in this big of a rush to get it done.
That's the best answer you've given us on it. It's the best answer you've ever given us in, in the seven years I've been on the council.
I guess, thank you.
Make a motion, make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Motion approved. Number three, a resolution to authorize the mayor to enter a cooperative endeavor agreement with Tancho Parish Government for emergency repairs of Honors Creek Bridge on Club Deluxe. Lacy Landry.
This is the contract that the parish government approved last night that dedicates their 80,000, up to 80,000 to the same project that we have been describing. So this would just commit our, up to 80,000, as we've just allocated the funds for.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Motion approved. Number four, a resolution to award a contract to Beverly Construction Company, LLC, for 133,000, 133,450,000 for bridge protection, Club Deluxe Road at Honors Creek.
Their price, their quote to us is 133,450,000. They're five bid items, you probably have them in front of you, and we would like to recommend an award to Beverly on this emergency project. We will email the award to them and the contracts tonight. Hopefully, they'll email back signatures the next day or two, and they'll start immediately, probably Monday, as I don't want too many more high water events against this bridge abutment. Anyway, I recommend award to Beverly.
Motion to approve.
Second. Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Motion approved. Number five, a resolution, one, authorizing the submission of a full application in the amount of 2,085,000 to the Clean Water State Revolving Fund to improve Hammond South Waste Water Treatment Plant, and two, naming the mayor as the person who may sign for a city on resulting loan with a 0.95% annual percentage rate and 20-year term, Charles Brochus.
Good afternoon. As the mayor mentioned at the last council meeting, we did receive preapproval on the application we submitted for the sewer treatment plant. This is your approval to proceed with the full application. We have 90 days, we're already about middle of March, so we basically would have until about the end of May to submit the full application, and then we're probably looking at two to three months before we finally, finally have approval. So we're probably looking at starting in the fall, I would think. The only real change here is the amount, the amount's been slightly reduced based on quotes that we got from the engineer. So we're at 2,085,000, and that is the amount that was preapproved. I think the original application was like for 2,090,000.
Motion to approve.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Number six, a resolution to approve Our Moms Restaurant and Bar located at 205 East Thomas Street, Hammond, Louisiana, sell high-low alcohol on premise, will condition approve pending health, fire, and building inspections. The owner is Our Moms Hammond, LLC.
Moving.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
This is not Our Moms, it's Your Moms. Our Moms will be closing and will no longer exist. This is a new business.
Your Moms.
It's the other way.
Your Moms is closed.
Your Moms. Our Moms is the new one. Okay, I got it backwards. Okay. So we are coming tonight for a conditional because they don't have all their inspections finalized. We're, we did get the health inspected today, and we're waiting for fire and building tomorrow afternoon. So we're asking for approval pending these inspections come in good tomorrow. Once those have been finalized, then everything will be completed, everything else has been done. So that's what we're asking for tonight. I do have the owners here, if you have any questions, and I'm gonna call them up, okay? Y'all can come up now.
Good evening, guys. How y'all doing today?
Trent Fercina, 7907 Valencia Court.
JP Now, 2623 Theodore Drive, Baton Rouge, Louisiana.
How's it going today?
Mr. President, guys, first of all, I wanna say, you know, I love your food, but I, we need to have a serious discussion tonight. I wanna make sure that, I understand y'all being permitted as a restaurant, but not a bar, okay? What that means is you can't at 10 o'clock stop serving your menu that you serve all day long and only serve alcohol. It also means you can't move your furniture around to become a bar. I just wanna make sure that's on the record.
That is all, all set. I mean, there's, obviously with the spot we're in, there's nowhere to move tables, there's nowhere, I mean, y'all can go and walk up there and see, I think upstairs.
Since you mentioned the spot you're in, I think last time y'all were downtown, we had some issues with noise. You have, you have a patio or balcony, I guess now, people live right across the way.
The, like, as the business has grown, obviously, the name's changing, the model has changed too. You know, I mean, if you go to the Baton Rouge location, there is no, you know, late-night bar, there's no loud music, there's no subs in this building, it's all wall-mounted speakers, you know, on the, on the top. So it's not, I know it's hard to, you know, maybe believe on that end of it, but it is because that's what we've done so long, but it is changing. You know, I do wanna let that, if the place closes at 10 o'clock, you know, there's nobody up there, that's fine with me, totally fine now. Go home to my wife, and everything's good, you know?
The food, I think, I mean, I know, I assume there's a lot of money made in alcohol, I've never been in the bar business, but I think your food is excellent, and, you know, I just wanna make sure we don't have some, some of the same issues that you had last time you were downtown and.
Absolutely.
You know, the fact that, and look, maybe y'all go home and, if you live out of town, you don't know what goes on after you leave.
Right.
But you've been kinda operating as a bar after 10 o'clock.
And even lately, I mean, even, you know, before the other location that just closed on last Thursday, I mean, I'm, I'm sure, you know, the city's known that there's no, there's been no late night at all. We shut that down. We shut, shut it, shut it down at 9 o'clock at night, you know? The new place, I don't know if y'all walked through it yet, but it's, it's definitely more family-oriented now, there's more to handle larger tops and all that kinda stuff. So it's not as much, it's more being modeled more after the Baton Rouge location.
One more question, serious, serious question. Y'all keeping the five dollar hamburgers on Tuesdays?
No. Mondays, no.
Monday?
Right. They're both following suit to the same specials.
Okay.
So, we were next to a taco shop over there that did something on Tuesday, so we're going on Monday this, over here, cause we're back to another taco shop.
I wish y'all luck, and I, I did walk through it, it's been maybe two months ago, so it wasn't finished, but I'm looking forward to seeing it.
It's, it's come a very long way since Tuesday.
I wish y'all luck.
Yeah, I wish, yeah, if y'all wanna stop by afterwards, we'll be there, so. All right.
I have another question, Mr. President. One more. Y'all do know about serving to minors?
Absolutely.
Make sure everybody comes when I call, permit knows that.
Yes.
Chief, what was your office, does?
He is.
So, you know, you know that y'all will be checked.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Okay. Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Jason Hood.
No.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Good luck, guys.
Thank you, guys. Have a good evening.
Number seven, a resolution to accept a donation of a 2006 Ford Crown Victoria, VIN number 2FAFP71W06X141927, from the Seven Ward Marshal, Janet Don.
This is a vehicle that the city originally donated to the marshal's office back in 2015. They have some mechanical issues with it, so they are wanting to donate it back to the city so we can start the process of surplusing it and selling it on Gov. deals.
I'm sorry, that was just.
It's reckoning for the kids.
Are we gonna donate it back to this guy? That's funny.
I gotta tap on you to take that.
Do we want it back, Mr.? Do we have to take it back, or?
There was actually some kind of agreement, I don't know whether it was written or verbal in the past, past administration of council, that if we do give them a vehicle, that they donate it back to us so we can sell it and get the.
I got you, okay. I got it, okay.
We have to fix it, right?
No.
Motion to approve. Second.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Number eight, a resolution to approve budget change form number 18-05, transfer 190,000 from Drainage Improvement FY 2017, project number 42011707, and 140,000 from Villa West Bulkhead and miscellaneous repairs, project 42011807, to Drainage Improvements FY 2018, project number 40211806, Webb Anderson.
Good evening. Y'all all should have hopefully received the letter that listed all the drainage improvements that are included in the project this year, also a schedule for the improvements, we are planning to advertise next week for it. The budget change form is simply taking the leftover money from last year that, we had actually moved extra money there, if y'all recall, to do some extra locations. Those locations were not done in that project, contractor wanted to negotiate, so we just cut it off and move them back to the 2018 project. And the Villa West Bulkhead improvements are included in the project, so we're just moving both of those funds to this year's fund.
I'm excited about that. Motion to approve. Second.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.[1558.73]